Could be a quick read.
Yeah.
Just saying. Could be.
Oh, thanks.
We're good to go.
We're good to go.
If you haven't already done so, please silence your cell phones. Good morning, and welcome to the March 18th meeting of the Ponte Gorda City Council. Before we begin this morning, I'd like for all of us to stand and give a moment of silence for the seven U.S. Marines and four Louisiana Army National Guard soldiers who lost their lives in helicopter crash on the coast of the Florida Panhandle. Thank you. We're going to have our invocation and then the pledge of allegiance.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity in government to share in this meeting for a time of refreshment of spirit and fellowship. Help us to work and think and pray together that we may be more perfectly fitted to serve you and those whom we work with, so that we may be called. Help us, God, to look wise and reflect thy wisdom, fill us with high ideals, inspiration with lower and goodwill in all, that we may rightly lead in the paths of tribory and human, and all that we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And this morning, we have one proclamation to be read by Councilmember Kim Devine.
Thank you, my pleasure. Debbie is not going to be here to accept this. She's stuck in traffic. I guess there's a big accident on the bridge, but I'm going to go ahead and read it because I think this is very important for all of us to know. We hear it. Proclamation, City of Ponte Gorda, Florida, whereas the observance of Meals on Wheels Day provides an opportunity to support senior nutrition programs which deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger. And whereas volunteer drivers for Meals on Wheels program are the backbone of the program and not only deliver nutritious meals to the homebound seniors and individuals with disabilities, but also deliver caring concern and attention for their welfare and provide a powerful socialization opportunity for millions of seniors to help combat loneliness and isolation. And whereas senior nutrition programs deserve recognition for the contributions they have made and will continue to make to local communities, our state, and our nation. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Ponte Gorda, Florida does hereby proclaim March 24, 2015 as Meals on Wheels Day and encourages all Ponte Gorda residents to join in the open house celebration at the Meals on Wheels office at 3082 Tamiami Trail, Port Charlotte, beginning at noon on March 25, 2015. Passed and duly adopted in regular session the 18th day of March, 2015. City of Ponte Gorda, Carolyn Freeland Mayor.
Thank you. And so we'll be sure she could...
Yes, I'll be there at the open house.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have now a presentation. Howard?
Yes, we have a tenure service award for our telecommunicators in our dispatch center, Audrey Dennis.
Audrey.
Audrey.
Butch Arnold, Ponte Gorda Police Chief.
Audrey.
Good morning, Council, and good morning, Ponte Gorda. The Ponte Gorda Police Department family joins you once again to recognize what I like to call one of our foundation veterans. These are people that I admire the most. They stick with the city through thick and thin, tough economies, you know, issues that go on in personal lives, but they're here. Gloria's been here for 10 years now. And Gloria...
No, Audrey.
Audrey. Sorry, Gloria. I'm looking at you taking pictures. I'm sorry. Audrey has been here for 10 years. Audrey began with the department on May 5, 2005, and she is our lead trainer, and she has been our lead trainer in dispatch for two years. She has been a two-time civilian of the year award winner. She has been a communications training officer for the last six years, and she is responsible for training all new dispatchers. And as I have said to you all on many occasions, dispatching is the toughest job in law enforcement with the most number of performance measures and quality control measures of any level that we do within the department. So it is a stressful job. I would also like to say that Bobby, her husband, is in the audience, and I've already thanked him for her for the last 10 years. We consider our family members to be a part of our agency and our city, and she has two sons and one grandchild that she's kind of proud of named Mason. And I would also like to add that about two years ago, we went through a little bit of a crisis in that in an eight-person dispatch unit, when you have, when you go one person down, like somebody leaves or retires, it's stressful on everybody. Well, we went three down, and that year was probably the most difficult year that we have had in the dispatch arena for some time. And to fill those three slots, we had to train upon train. Well, for that year, we tore our dispatch unit up, filling those gaps, training, working shifts to cover, and Audrey, as the lead trainer, led that program. And as I said, thick and thin. Audrey, we are proud of you, and this is your day. Look forward to 10 more. She's going to say a word to you and tell me what part of the country she's from.
That's Massachusetts. But I just want to say I've had a great 10 years, and if it wasn't for my coworkers and my family with all the way dispatch works, I would have never been able to do it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Audrey.
Thank you.
At this time, anyone that is nominated for a board or committee position with the council, if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself, now would be the time to do it. Anyone here? Okay, we'll move on then into our public hearings. Our first one is GA 0315.
Yes. This is an ordinance, first reading, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Ponte Gorda, Florida, amending the City of Ponte Gorda firefighter's retirement system as adopted by ordinance 879-87, as subsequently amended, is hereby further amended to provide for compliance with the Internal Revenue Code, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
We have done this for general employees and police. Now we're doing it for the fire, and that's to update the language in the pension ordinance to comply with IRS regulations.
This is, do we have any other comments? Any questions, Council? This is a public hearing.
Oh, it is? Oh, yeah.
This is a public hearing. Is anyone wish to speak? And the last call for public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve GA 0315. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We now move on to ZA 0315.
Yes, and this is also the first reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Ponte Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter 26 of the Ponte Gorda Code known as the Land Development Regulations, Article 11, Sign Standards, Section 11.8, Signs in Right-of-Way, Subsection C, Special Event Signs, providing a process for application, review, and approval for off-premises special event signage, amending Article 13, Events, Section 13.4, Special Events, providing for definitions and a process for special events to reflect regulations adopted in the event manual by Resolution Number 3124-14, providing for conflict and severability, and providing an effective date.
This now begins the Terry Tubbs portion.
Good morning, for the record, Terry Tubbs, zoning official. This started out as just an amendment to the Land Development Regulations to reflect language that had already been adopted into the city's event manual. And I did get a couple of, when we went to the planning commission, the planning commission did recommend approval, but to amend the term tennis tournaments to athletic events due to the pickleball and other events that might actually occur when it was originally adopted. I mean, tennis tournaments goes back to 1995, so staff and planning commission do recommend approval based on that. I did get a question, something brought to my attention. It is currently in the event manual, but it made me do a little bit of research. A couple of people did bring it up. On the last page of the ordinance, the sentence was added that said that this type of event, you know, when we're talking about carnival circuses, and it includes exhibitions, said that that would require city council approval. And when that was put into the event manual, it was based on staff's understanding of Chapter 4A, which when I read it really closely yesterday and the day before, wasn't exactly what it said. So I went backwards to see where this came from. And the regulations for carnival circuses and various exhibitions actually went back to 1926, when their, got to start at the beginning.
Thank you, Terry.
When the current concerns began to arise about the safeness of the rides, the carnies, and that sort of thing. That ran until 1962, when they started to limit the wild animals within city limits. 1964 was actually when we allowed one elephant at a time associated with an event. In 1970, a much lengthier ordinance was adopted, which provided for inspections of the equipment, specific fees for the rides to be set up. All of the applications were submitted to the city manager, and then with the assistance of the police chief and fire chief, they would review the application and determine whether it could be approved. If they determined it would be denied, the applicant had the option of going to city council for appeal. 1985, which is the regulation that still exists in Chapter 4A, and I found it to be extremely outdated, provided further clarification. Still, it was submittal to the city manager with the fire chief and police chief doing the approvals. There were fees specific to carnivals and circuses for each individual ride, each concessionaire. There was a requirement for an occupational license. In 1995, and up until 1995, the city's manager's office was doing the reviews and approvals, basically, of all events. 1995, Planning and Zoning was tasked with writing the first event manual. That was adopted as policy in April of 1995. And within that, it did change the review process in that you had administrative approvals for smaller events, DRC, or Development Review Committee, approval for the larger events. And then many events still required what they called at the time, special council approval or SCA events. And those would involve closing of streets, animals, things that lasted, you know, more than two days over the attendance. And so, and we've evolved where city council really doesn't review most of the events that come through unless it's an extended, you know, late at night or something that is somewhat unusual about the request. Sometime between 1985 and the present, and I didn't do that much research, Florida state statutes adopted statutory requirements for carnivals and events, provides for inspections, provides for maintenance of the equipment, provides for not requiring the local business tax receipt because they have specific licenses that are associated through the state. So, all that said, that sentence probably should be struck. And we probably should go back and amend the event manual to also remove it because there are provisions to cover, the circuses, carnivals, and other exhibitions. We don't want to put people through a process that's unnecessary when it is already covered in the statutes.
Yes. Rachel?
That's interesting because, okay, say a carnival comes here and they want to set up. If, when they come through DRC, would you ask them for their state licenses, or how does the city get to see that they have the appropriate licensure through the state? I mean, I see that they took away the local business tax, can see that's, you know, kind of a double whammy, I guess, because if they go to every, you know, every city they go to, they would have to get one. But is that looked at through the DRC? Is all that taken care of?
That's something that, I mean, so far, we've had very few. We actually did have one of the churches who used to actually have a carnival and set up rides. But it's something that we may, you know, with this amendment here, as well as an amendment in the event manual, and you'll call out something specific for them that they would have to include copies of their licenses from the state, their inspection records of their rides to ensure that they are doing as is required per statute.
I would think any of those that fall under that statute, we would want to check for that.
Yes.
Other questions? So the bottom line is, is that you want to eliminate the last sentence, this type of event shall also require the approval of Ponte Gorda City Councils. Am I correct?
Yes.
Thank you for all of that research.
I thought I asked a simple question. I guess not.
It's not so simple. All right. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you for the history lesson.
This is a public hearing on ZA, being at the right one?
0315.
ZA 0315. Does anyone wish to speak on this particular ordinance? Against anyone wishing to speak, this is a public hearing.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye. Move approval, ZA 0315.
It's been...
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve...
With amendments?
With amendments. With amendments.
ZA 0315. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, now we're moving on to ZA 0415.
Yes, and this is the first reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Ponte Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter 26, Ponte Gorda Code known as the Land Development Regulations, amending Article 3, Regulating Districts, Section 3.9, CC City Center District, adding a new subsection H, Decorative Exterior Lighting Standards, providing specific criteria and permit requirements for decorative exterior lighting, amending Article 11, Sign Standards, Subsection 11.6B, prohibited signs and devices to allow exemption from prohibition for any exterior illuminated tubing or strings of lights for properties located in the city center zoning district, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
For the record, Terry Tubbs, zoning official. This has gone through the review of the LDR Committee, Planning Commission. I've, you know, tried to obtain as much input also from the downtown business chamber of commerce to make sure that no one would have any issues or concerns with it. At the planning commission, they did recommend moving forward, but there were a couple of amendments that they recommended within the ordinance. One of the things that we had looked at was how to keep them from being too bright and glary. That's the big concern, is that you're going to have something really bright and glary. Mitchell had done some research, and he found that the color temperature would regulate that. Mr. Rose did talk to me this morning, and he still has a concern. He thinks it should be referred to as, you know, through wattage, and if council desires, I can go back and do some more research on that. But within the changes, they wanted to remove the term low voltage, because low voltage does not necessarily mean it's not going to be bright, and to allow for the solar type of lighting, if it exists. On the second page again, oops, removing the reference to the low voltage. And then under the permitting, adding, well, the electrical permit shall be required unless totally solar powered, and photo voltage solar will still require an electrical permit. And those were the only changes that were required, or requested.
Questions, comments? Yes, first, Rachel, and then Tom.
Okay. I think this is great. I would accept those changes if the color, wattage, I mean, you know, if we think it's too bright, we really need to be able to address it. So whichever way staff feels is necessary is fine with me. I just, I wanted to ask Terry, what is going to be our outreach? Because, you know, this wasn't allowed before, and now it's going to be allowed, so we really need to do some outreach with the businesses to let them know, you know, what's allowed, what's not allowed. They're going to have to keep it in working order. It can't be multicolored, and that type of thing before. I mean, I'm sure we're not going to go out there and start giving them code violations, but at least let them know that this is what is now allowed and that we're encouraging them to partake if they want.
Tom?
I would just like to compliment the vetting process. I think it was very thorough. I think everybody paid a lot of attention to it. I'm understanding that the neon, neons are going to be limited to just signage only, and there will not be any neon lights anyplace in it.
Correct. Neons wouldn't be allowed for outlining the perimeters.
Yes, Nancy?
Yeah, I'm glad, though, to see that the neon is still allowed for signs, because I know there are a few, and some business owners have expressed an interest to me that they want to make sure that their sign can stay, because it's part of the, they consider it to be part of the character of the building. But, and I didn't realize the temperature explanation until I went online and looked and, oh, it's there. So I learned something out of this.
Yes, Kim?
I would just like to see us go to the downtown merchants in the Ponte Gorda Chamber and just let them know, and they can get the word out.
Well, this, again, is a first reading. So, yes, go ahead.
This clearly is not my area of expertise, but it was my understanding that low voltage is used in exterior settings like, you know, landscaping lights and things like that because of the hazard that standard voltage may cause. In making that change, did we check with our building department to see whether there would be a problem in having standard voltage lighting outside?
The, since an electrical permit is required, the building department would review the type of application of electric that is being proposed. If they see that as a safety concern in the location that it is proposed, then I'm sure they would catch it at the permit process.
Nancy?
Comment in regard to letting businesses know, since not everybody belongs to the Chamber of Commerce, the downtown merchants, is this something we should use the business tax license and just somehow notify each of the businesses that this now exists?
I was thinking maybe a really neat little pamphlet that Julie Ryan puts together, you know? We could have it online as well, just to say, these are our new lighting standards and, you know, and get it out that way. Do you have email addresses for LBTs? Are you doing by email? So that would be fairly easy.
Yeah, we can probably communicate that way. Question about solar. Again, is that regulated by temperature? I mean, do we know what might be coming in the future in terms of solar lighting?
It's my understanding, and I can research it further before we get to second reading, it's my understanding that the color temperature is a standard specification that comes with lighting.
Okay. Howard, did you have a comment?
Actually, our code officers are out and about, and our volunteers in policing are out and about. If we did a brochure, they could hand them to every single business in the city center district.
That would be great.
That's great.
That would be nice. That would be very personal.
That's a quick way of getting the word out.
Very personalized.
I like that.
Any other comments or questions?
It makes it more personal.
Okay, this is a public hearing on ZA 0415. Does anyone wish to speak to this ordinance? This is a public hearing? Last call?
Move to close the public hearing. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Move approval of ZA 04-15.
Second.
It's been moved and...
With the amendments, yes.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ZA 0415 with the amendments. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll now move on to ZA 0515.
Yes, and this also is the first reading of an ordinance that I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Ponte Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter 26, Ponte Gorda Code known as the Land Development Regulations, amending Article 3, Regulating Districts, Section 3.13, SRO, Special Residential Overlay District, amending subsection L, Storage of Vehicles and Watercraft, Providing Clarification for Watercraft Storage on Davits, Providing for Conflict and Severability, and Providing an Effective Date.
For the record, Terry Tubbs, zoning official.
Excuse me, Terry, I need to make a correction on that title. It's not L, it's subparagraph 1.
Okay. This topic has been discussed with several of the committees just to obtain input. I do want to point out right from the get-go, I made a mistake from what the city attorney's corrections were on the original draft, and... What was in your packet, and what I got from this somehow, is under 1-1, is that I added that word "only" to the first sentence, where it says watercraft may only be stored entirely on the dock. However, the original document did not have that. City Attorney's markup had the word "only" in the second sentence, and thank you for bringing that to my attention. So that was an error. It should be in the second sentence, and I just wanted to point that out right away.
Rachel?
So you're taking it out of number one and putting it in number two?
Yes.
Okay, so number one, we'll read as you have it here on the screen.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Yes, Nancy?
In looking at this and talking with a number of people, just to have the word "davit" in here in this particular section, this is Section 26, which is the Land Development Regulations. And Section 6 is where it's the water side. It seems to me that this section should really be reflecting that we do not want what we want from the seawall land side, so we can state that the watercraft may only be stored waterward of the seawall. And then specify in Section 6 of our regulations if we do not want boats stored on davits as one thought, just to keep it clean and to keep it. And I know that the McHale's aren't working on a rewrite of Section 6, so that it makes it a little bit more clear, so that we're not mixing up what's in our different sections. And would actually like to restrict, suggest that we not allow boats to be stored on davits waterside, well, on davits, because it's danger, it can be dangerous, could have an impact on the seawalls. And if there's a storm, and talking with some of the residents, if there was a storm and a boat got water in it, it just adds more weight to the, what's, you know, the impact of the seawall. I also talked to some representatives that are involved in the planning commission, clarified that, you know, the concern they had was, what about all of those, the boats that are out there that might have been perhaps permitted? And I talked with Terry about this, that prior to 1981, it's hard to tell if something was permitted or not permitted. So we have a lot of things that we probably need to grandfather. That was probably some of the concern of the planning commission, is that we take care of those that need to be grandfathered, and we specify that. And specify that, you know, if it was permitted, then it was permitted. And if it wasn't permitted to have a boat that was stored on the pad, I think it would be, then that needs to be taken care of, but...
Well, I think you have a number of issues...
I have a number of issues. I have a number of issues that I'm bringing up, yes.
Okay, I think related to the first one in terms of removing, well, we've already taken it down, but removing the language from here, I think that just clarifies that I don't think we need to separate it out. I think if it clarifies it even for another section, I, I don't see a problem with leaving it in this section, but make sure the, the next section regarding the seawall also includes it. I understand that also from, um, the discussions that the new davits, uh, again, are quite substantial and can, can hold boats. Now, I would assume that it's up to the owner to determine whether or not they're going to leave a boat on a davit during a storm. I mean, that would just not be wise. And I would think that our boaters would know that. So I'm not sure to what extent we need to, you know, regulate it. Yes, Rachel?
Um, I agree with you, Carolyn. If this takes, if number two takes care of the photos that Terry has included here, I'm, I'm okay with that because you don't, nobody wants to look out their backyard, I don't think, and see that, especially, I mean, if it's a little dinghy, it'd be one thing, but they're full-sized fishing boats and that's really an eyesore. And I, it's really not, you know, it's really not what it was intended to be, but currently it's not in violation, correct?
For, with the watercraft in the rear yard, the intent has always been that it's not, not to be kept.
It can be on the dock, but not in the yard. So I think if this clarifies that and takes care of those specific situations, I'm okay with it.
Tom?
The purpose of this has been, the intent of this has been to prevent the storage of watercraft in your backyard. And what we're doing here today simply codifies that, makes it clear. And I'm in support of it, you know, with regard to storage of boats, uh, waterward, there, there are, there's a lot of different ways that the code allows you to do it. And Ron Paul would be happy to have a consultation with anybody who has any concerns about storing their boat waterward.
Comments, Kim?
No, I agree. I'm good with it.
Okay. Can we go?
Um, no, I'm just pondering. There was something you said, but I can't remember what it was, so...
Okay, well, we'll open the public hearing. You can always come back.
Great.
This is a public hearing on ZA 0515. Anyone wishing to speak on this ordinance? Mr. Rose, you have three minutes, sir.
I'll only take a couple of seconds. Ray Rose, representing the Pontegorroda Isles Civic Association Board of Directors, fully endorses that there be no boats stored in backyards and that we continue the policy of having clean backyards, particularly in the canal areas. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Any, anyone else wishing to speak to this ordinance? Please state your name and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Gary Brewster with the Burnstour Isles Canal Advisory Committee. Uh, when we discussed this in, in our committee, uh, we believe that a boat lifted above the seawall on davits, even though it's waterward, is exactly as unattractive as one sitting in the backyard. And the second concern that we have is that, uh, as was mentioned by Ms. Prafky, if someone inadvertently lifts their boat legally and leaves it there, but forgets to take the plug out of the boat and then have a, not talking about a hurricane, but a rainstorm and puts a thousand pounds of water in that boat, uh, we have a lot of concerns about the seawall.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to ZA 0515? This is a public hearing. Second call? Last call?
Moved to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, Nancy?
Uh, what I was, um, intending to say that I had forgotten earlier was that we need to make sure that what we, what we do here is consistent with chapter six so that we aren't somehow in the redoing of chapter six inadvertently, unknowingly creating some kind of conflict, so...
Are we in the process of redoing section six? Is that correct?
Yes, McHale is working on revision.
Okay. Howard, did you have something? Anyone else?
Um, I would just like to make, um, a comment in regard to those boats, though, that are there that might have been permitted. That's an issue. I don't know what we do about that. And I, I totally agree with, with what Mr. Rose said and the PGICA. It's just, there may be those that years ago might have been permitted. In some cases, we might not even be able to track down the permit.
Do you mean permitted to have their boat in the backyard?
Yes, some of these might have been situations back in 1960-something and we can't track the permit. Do we just tell people that they have to stop?
Have we permitted boats in the backyard?
No. But the, the concern is that in the 60s and 70s, these either paper block or concrete pads were constructed abutting the seawall. The most recent one I found, and just reviewing through aerials and lord knows I could have missed some, uh, was 1977. Uh, the original ordinance that the city adopted that I found was 1981. I could not find the original Pontegorroda Isles deed restrictions. However, I did look up the Burnstour Isles deed restrictions because they were very similar, if not identical. And what the deed restriction said was that no garage or carport shall be erected, which is separated from the main building. No trailers or trucks of any kind, nor any boats, boat trailers, campers, mobile homes or the like shall be parked overnight on or adjacent to the above-mentioned land without the express written consent of the grantor, except that boats may be parked in the waterway adjacent as prescribed in paragraph nine below. So, um, they are deed restrictions. We don't enforce deed restrictions, but it would, um, lead you to think that the intent was not to have the watercraft stored in the rear yard, at least not for an extended time.
Rachel?
When we adopted the ordinance about the six-foot rule in the backyard, did we grandfather anything?
As with any ordinance, if there is something that's an existing nonconformity...
It's nonconforming. So this would be nonconforming in this instance, correct?
I would...
So if the seawall had to be repaired there, they could not put those pavers back. They would have to lay sod or turf or something of the sort, correct? So...
Should be what it...
Even if it was permitted, it's now nonconforming, so...
Well, I would agree that if something happened to the seawall, that it could not go back in, in place.
But you're saying have them tear it out now or...
No, I'm just saying that there may be those situations that are nonconforming. What do we do in those situations where they're nonconforming? If it's a situation where, in some of these photographs that, that we've seen, the, they appear like the homes aren't that old and the boats are on there, they need to go. In the case of one instance where the bow of the boat was resting right on the seawall, I mean, um...
In that case, that would have to, that would be a code infraction.
Yes.
Yes, Tom?
I would think we want to apply a, a timeframe to allow the homeowner to adopt the new circumstances and six months, a year, or, or, you know, whatever is an appropriate amount of time. But over time, it certainly should be taken care of.
Well, I'm a little confused as to what we're talking about. I'm sorry. If, if we're talking about somebody that, that has, um, constructed, when I talk, I'm talking about a davit, but I'm just talking about some of the things that we've seen where somebody has stored a boat in their backyard, either on a trailer or if they've made a frame of some sort to store.
Yes, right here.
Well, I mean, this looks like it's a, there's like, this would be davits to me. I'm not sure what I'm seeing here.
Right, well, it looks like the boat was...
That's patio.
Okay, all right, that, that part I didn't, well...
It is a...
Terry, could you put up the picture of it? Has the, the boat overhanging the, uh, the seawall?
This one's...
Oh, the one that's resting on the seawall?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That one or this one?
You can't do that, can you? You can't do that.
No.
That is a large boat.
So, I mean, to me, to me, that, that would be storing the boat on the backyard and that's been prohibited all along. So there's nothing to grandfather.
And if he's even resting on the seawall in that case.
Yeah. And that particular instance, they've already been cited on that, um, because it, it recently appeared, it was one that the VIPs did let us know was there.
Now, with respect to the one that was previous to that, I don't know what the, you know, when, when was that built? Was it, was that a modification that was done after the permit for the davits was issued? I mean, I don't, those blocks kind of just looked like temporary blocks that somebody put there to hold the boat. I don't know that that would have been permitted. I don't know. I mean, if, if it was permitted, then yes, there's some vested right there. Um, if this wasn't permitted as a storage place, it, as part of the davit system, then, then, you know, it's not grandfathered. So I think it, it needs to be fact-specific to the individual properties. If it's been permitted, all right, there might be some, some vested right argument there. And then if it, if it is permitted and you want to be able to phase those out, what you do is you pick a particular period of time from the time it was originally pure, uh, permitted to see how much of, whether they've got their investment, uh, uh, out of the property. And then, uh, and then after that, you know, like seven years or whatever it might be, then it has to be removed. I mean, that's typically what you do with something that's, that's grandfathered and you don't want to leave it there forever.
Okay. So we're now at the point where this particular ordinance, again, eliminates boats from being stored in the backyard.
Move approval of ZA 05-15.
Second.
With amendment?
What, with, um, what's the amendment?
Taking only out of, uh...
Oh, yes, with the changes that are appearing on the screen here.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ZA 0515 with the modifications. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I still have a question about those that are there over, appear, that have been there.
Well, I think what we need to do is figure, I think what we need to do is see what we're talking about, how many, you know, we're talking about.
I'm, I'm not trying to say I want them there at all. It's just that these have been there and...
Are, are you suggesting that, that like that, uh, the picture, if you can go back, the one with the pavers and all that, that, that's relatively common or that there are more than...
No, I'm not saying that perhaps it's common. It's, it's, as I've talked with, with Terry, um, she was explaining to me that there are some situations where the, these have been in existence for forty or fifty years. And, you know, how do we go back? And the question I have, maybe this is something we need to look at between this reading and the next reading, is how do we go back and, um, and address those situations? I understand the newer ones, we say, hey, you weren't supposed to do that.
Right.
But the ones that have been there for a long time.
If it's, if it's been there for any amount of time prior to the time that we, um, made it clear that they were prohibited, then they would be considered a, a legal, nonconforming structure. And they'd be allowed to continue. We, we have provisions in our code relating to nonconforming structures that would apply to that situation.
Okay. Tom?
Do, do we need to, and this is a question, do we need to draw a distinction here between a davit and boat storage and boats being stored is what I, is what I mean? The, the permit was for the davit. Permit was not issued for a boat being stored.
Right.
So maybe there's a distinction that we need to, if we, we are precluding boats from being stored. That's the purpose of, of this ordinance. We're not such, we're not mandating people take their davits out if they're, if they're a permit.
No.
We're, we're saying that they can't, even though they have a permit for a davit, they can't store their boat.
Correct.
Correct. And that's what, and that's what our language is, is clarifying.
It's really, it's a non-issue as far as I see it.
I'm okay too.
Okay.
Unless, unless there was a situation like this where it was, you know, before we prohibited, um, before we prohibited storage or before we prohibited, uh, anything, I mean, there was a period of time when, when, when stuff predated any of our codes. And if somebody can, you know, fifty years ago or whatever, somebody can show that they've had something and maintained something before there was any code that prohibited, that would be considered a nonconforming use. I can't imagine there's that many of them out.
Well, and there were deed restrictions, initially at least in PGIA and as well as in BSI, I believe. So it would, I would think that those would also hold.
Okay.
And basically what the city did was to codify our deed restrictions.
Yeah, great, great deal of them, yes.
Again, I'm just looking at this, Terry, I don't know what background you've got with the respect to the one that's been put on there. Um, but to me, those blocks look like they've just been placed there to improvise a, um, a cradle for what otherwise would have been just a davit.
That's a possibility. Um, the VIP that sent me the picture said that most of the time there is a watercraft that is, uh, sitting there, um, that...
We can, we can, we can probably tell from aerials how long that's been there.
I can check with, um, the county mapping because their, their aerials go back much further. Currently, there's a fair amount of vegetation on the back of that lot, so you really can't see, but years ago, it might have been visible.
Okay. Yes, Tom?
Just one more thing and I, we probably need to, if, if that location is now precluded from having a boat sitting in the back, the davits become useless. The owner will deal with them at some point in time.
Why couldn't they, I, why couldn't they just, um, using the davits, hang it over, um, waterward of the seawall, which is what the language says?
They should be able to do that. With those davits, they would be swinging, they should be swinging davits. But whatever.
They may or may not be able to do that. I'm, I'm, that's a question for Ron Paul.
Okay, can we move on?
Yes.
All righty. Uh, we are now moving into the consent agenda and accepting citizens' comments for any of our consent agenda items, including a resolution to notify the Public Risk Management of Florida of the city's intent to withdraw from the PRM's Property and Casualty Self-Insurance Pool, uh, notice of intent to consider the designation of the verandas at Pontegorroda as a brownfield area, invoice, two invoices, also an award for water supply study in accordance with our master agreement, uh, for water and wastewater master planning, as well as approval of nomination to be submitted to the Climate Outreach Community of Practice to enter 2015 Spirit of Community Awards. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on any of these issues? No one wishes to speak? I'll entertain a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we can move into our regular agenda and citizens' comments are accepted here. And this would be for the use of the city seal, discussion regarding our scheduling of a workshop specifically focused on Alligator Creek access to Charlotte Harbor, our discussion of permitted encroachments into required yards, and identification of topics for our joint meeting of the city council and county commission. Jay? Mr. Buckley, three minutes.
Jay Buckley, Pontegorroda Boaters Alliance. First, I, again, I want to make it very clear because of the individual organizations belong to the alliance, I want to make it clear that we do have those that are opposed to the project as well as those that support it. As a result, we have used no treasury funds from the Pontegorroda Boaters Alliance for this project. All money spent, the engineering and permitting to date or research has been paid for by private donors. So I want to make that very clear because it's been stated several times in a paper that, that was paid for by Boaters Alliance. Secondly, I just want to encourage, uh, your, um, approval of a workshop. I think it's really the only way to go. Uh, we've got so, such large numbers. I know a good while back, um, you, you all stated that you wanted to see the, uh, project. Well, the chambers obviously are not, when you see the crowd that turned out on March the third, the chambers are not adequate. And I just, uh, would also encourage you with your approval that it be timely in that an awful lot of support for this project are people that live so far out that rent the condos or own the condos or whatever. These are northern people, go home in the summer. They're some of our greatest supporters and we'd like to have the workshop held while they're here. And, uh, with that, I just, um, thank you for your help so far. Uh, oh, I, uh, one more other thing. I talked to the engineer yesterday and he has a special, uh, he's prepared three PowerPoint presentations, one which, uh, those of you who attended the March three meeting saw. The second one is geared strictly toward government, uh, to try to answer your questions, permitting, all that type of thing. Then he will have a third one that is, uh, prepared for the, the permitting organizations, DEP, Corps of Engineers and so forth. So, uh, and, and we are prepared, we have enough money to cover his appearances and not that we're not accepting any more donations, we are. But, uh, so anyway, I, I thank you again.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. Steve Fagan. I'm not, I'm not against the, the cut, but I do have some comments. I imagine your discussion is going to be talking about setting up workshop. I think there's a lot of unanswered questions, I think, before you can set that date. There are, in, in this area, there's a, a, a big conglomerate of condos. There's thirty-five condos in this, in this unit, which... There's 35 condos in this, in this unit, which represents 832 units. No one has commented yet on how they are be assessed, or how they will be counted, if a vote is, is necessary. I think that's got to be addressed first before you even can set up a workshop. The engineer's summary counts a partial of 1,556 benefit, benefited units, and he says it's conservative. I don't know what his mythology was, but there's a 1,228 single-family units in that designated area. That includes 16 parcels that are not even in the city. And the question is, how are they going to be handled? The difference between the engineers and the numbers I see, there's something wrong in, so he's, somebody's got to look at what his mythology is that he used to get those counts. In the past, comments have been made that property values will be increased. Has anyone talked to the property assessor as to whether this could be done, or what will happen when this happens? It's a known fact that the land values of similar lots throughout PGI varies depending on how close they are to Ponce Inlet. For instance, a tip lot close to Ponce Inlet, the land value is at $252,000. The same lot on Pine Siskin, which is about 2.2 miles from Ponce, is $145,000. A standard 80-by-20 lot on San Mateo is valued at $220,000. That same-sized lot on Pine Siskin is valued at $126,000, and on Alomar, $100,000. So I think those are questions that have to be answered before you can even set up a workshop.
Thank you.
I'm Dean Blumke, resident of the Bird Section of Punta Gorda. I think the, and I was kind of an organizer of the meeting over at Punta Gorda Isles, I think just the numbers alone that showed that probably indicates that we have an underserved portion of town, and maybe the things that were just talked about by the previous speaker kind of underlay that, and it's time to bring it to a workshop, so I really encourage you to go ahead and schedule the workshop.
Thank you.
A lot of good work has been done so far, and a lot of volunteers have contributed a lot. It's, it's just time to take a look. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on any of the items related to our current agenda? Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, we will move, actually, let us take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back to the agenda.
Sounds good. That's great.